You're live now, Judy.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of November 30th, 2021. Unfortunately, I'm only able to attend via the phone through Tropiano's phone because neither my video nor my audio is working. So I will ask for a roll call, please.
Roll call, all five Selectmen are present. And that's it. You got it.
Excellent. May I have the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr., oh, we will not be having Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Mr. Bowen this evening.
Okay.
Neither one of them will be attending.
All right.
Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Slaven, please.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is one under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. I will go to announcements. Mr. Manese?
We've got a power of Wareham Waste District meeting tomorrow, 5 o'clock, and we'll be going over the restated amended agreement, the contract for the next two and a half or three years for the town. And nothing really exciting. Well, also should be able to provide copy of the of our budget and the official papers done by Powers and Sullivan, you know, for all of our expenditures for you next month. I'll look to be able to do that. And this is our, I think, second complete audit, a third. So that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, any announcements, sir?
Just a reminder, the parade is this Saturday, kicks off at 2 o'clock from Viking Drive, goes down Marion Road, goes down Chapel Hill, takes a ride on Main Street, ends at Bessie Park. So far, through Angie Dunham, we've managed to round up two costumes for you two gentlemen. I'm still looking for one for myself. So I'll stay in touch with you as we get closer to the event so we can get you dressed so you're not dressing in the street at the at the thing. They want us there at 1:45, too, in formation, so.
Okay.
Might have a woman's costume that fits you.
Fits me.
You all set, Mr. Titlebaum?
Yeah, Alan apparently knows a WNBA player.
Yes, I do.
Okay, see, I knew it.
Mr. Slaven, do you have any announcements?
Yeah, we got a bunch of stuff today. Let me read this. I'll take my time so everybody understands and hears. This is from GATRA. We have a public meeting. I'll give you the information as we go along. Has to do with the routes of the changes. Hello, all. This is attached is the meeting poster and the route change flyers for the upcoming service changes. No changes to the Wareham-Dubedford connection from the last meeting, only minor changes to the Wareham-Plymouth connection. The Wareham routes flyer includes service to Shangri-La and a change to return service to Cranberry Highway between Main Ave and Buzzes Bay and remove it on the Onset Ave between Grove Street and Cranberry Highway. Also, although the blue loop will be one route, it will have two buses on it, traveling in opposite directions. This will allow existing connections, for example, Onset-Cranberry Plaza served in both directions remain intact. The meeting is Thursday, December 2nd at 3:00 p.m. at Town Hall. They did not list what is going to be in the auditorium or what room, but it just says Town Hall, unfortunately. There will also be a virtual meeting the same day at 6:30 for those who can't attend. If you give me a minute, I'm gonna have to pull up the poster and okay, I would appreciate if the newspapers could print this out as well as their own. Wareham, Thursday, December 2nd, 3:00 p.m. Okay, it says Wareham Town Hall Auditorium. I'm assuming that's been cleaned out enough to use. 54 Marion Road. Mass required to attend in person. If you can't make it, there'll also be a virtual public meeting on Thursday, December 2nd at 6:30. Zoom link will be posted on the GATRA website prior to the meeting. Or you can call GATRA at 800-483-2500. Or you can email them at customercomments@gatra.org. That should take care of that. Everybody's waiting for information on that. I had discussions earlier with the chief engineer on Route 6 and 28 project. Last week, they met with the Wareham Fire, Wareham Police and the construction crew on the divider for the highway. As you notice, there's a pretty substantial granite curbing that goes from before the stop and shop, really where the road splits, and comes back together down to the stop and shop light. That will stay in place as it is with the height. It's there. As it goes further down the road, it'll decrease the height, still using the granite and still being square, but it'll be low enough that a police cruiser with heavy-duty tires, but especially fire and EMS can get over the thing with a lot of problem. And that's how that will go through. They're also probably gonna add another turnaround. I think somewhere down the middle that where there's a one now, and that was discussed by our fire department, police department, you know, EMS, etc. They all agreed that was the solution that would be satisfactory. So that will be happening. If you notice, there's quite a bit of construction on both sides of the road with a lot of the electrical poles that has to be moved now. You can see what's happening. I also would like to thank municipal maintenance and the administration for the really nice job they did at Bessie Park with the Christmas trees and the lights around. When you come down at nighttime going through there, it really makes the place look nice. I don't know how people feel about it, but to me, it gives you a little bit of pride for the town to see something that's nice and pleasant. I've got a couple of things what we'll do in the next section. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tropiano, do you have any announcements, sir?
I do not.
Okay, I have a couple. I actually have several. I want to say thank you very much to Wareham High School students who managed to collect more than 3,000 units of food for the family pantry at Damian's Place. They had Spirit Week and the Key Club working from November 17th through the 23rd. It was only a week, and they were able to collect more than 3,000 units of food for donation. Not to be outdone, Deacon's Elementary School was able to collect 63 boxes of food, non-perishable food, which they donated to the Good Shepherd's Community Food Pantry. And I would remind you that Good Shepherd, among other places, serves weekly meals and has food baskets. It goes to show that Wareham families always come through. An announcement about the Christmas trees. There has been some confusion. The numbers for the Christmas trees are on the sleeves at the base of the trees. And so if you think that you decorated the wrong tree, please undo it. We've actually had a few calls in the Selectmen's Office about that. And maybe that seems like not a big deal, but if somebody had a favorite number, and that's why you chose that tree for them, then that's something that we would like to be able to honor. The other thing I would remind you all is to try and please use non-shatter or shatter-proof decorations because when we take the trees down, if glass is there, we're gonna have an awful time trying to pick it all up. There is a public meeting from the Solar Review Committee Wednesday, December 8th at Room 320 in the Multi-Service Center at 3:00 p.m. It's a public comment meeting, and they are really hoping that everyone will attend. And then I've been asked to read this. Mary Howell passed away on November 6th, 2021. She was the respected longtime vice president of the Wareham Historical Society in charge of the fairing tavern schedule. Over the years, she greeted hundreds of visitors as well as third-grade, ninth-year students who came every year on their field trips. Mary was an active volunteer in Wareham's Council on Aging with the Meals on Wheels program and their many member events. She also was a longtime volunteer at a Helping Paw Humane Society. Mary's quick humor and pithy remarks will be dearly missed by all of her family and friends. Her services were private at her request. And the VFW is having their Christmas Saturday, December 18th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. I understand that Santa Claus will be there from maybe 3:30 to 4:30. And there are several Christmas fairs this weekend on Saturday before the parade, and I urge you all to shop local and support all of the businesses who choose to do business in the town of Wareham. And that's the end of my announcements. Citizens' comments.
Oh, you want me to look? Or can you see it?
I can see that.
Okay, good.
Mr. Cosgrove, do you choose to address the board?
Alan has his hand up. I would imagine that's his wife.
Yes, Sandy, I know, wants to address.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Get a nice Thanksgiving. Very quickly, a housekeeping item. At the 48-minute mark of your meeting last week, Town Council indicated that a citizen reported that the town, that the Parker Mills Dam was owned 100% by 80 Makepeace. At the 16-minute mark of that recording, you'll see that that was an incorrect statement. And in fact, the citizen accurately reported that the dam was owned approximately 2/3 by the Makepeace Company. Council also indicated that expenditure of public funds for its minority interest in the dam is okay. But how are you gonna bifurcate costs of repair unless you fix only 1/3 of the dam, which would of course be illogical, or you get reimbursed for the cost attributable to the other 2/3 that are privately owned? And I make that point because in the town's complaint in 2018 against the majority, alleged majority owner Makepeace, it's a claim that Makepeace had refused to acknowledge its ownership, did so in a way that threatened public safety. But most importantly, the town alleged that the expenditure of public funds and the defendant's refusal to contribute towards the improvements resulted in the defendant Makepeace being unjustly enriched and unfairly benefited by such expenditures to the detriment of the town. The grant application recently submitted by the town to remove the dam, it appears that 80 Makepeace may have acknowledged its ownership responsibility, so that's progress. If not, the the application should be amended. The most important point in conclusion is that the financial responsibility for this dam continues to need to be clarified properly. That's true for past expenses, present expenses, future expenses, and maybe most important of all, for the indemnities, reps, warranties that may be required of the developer or the lenders onto this project. Spending our tax dollars for the benefit of a private owner is not proper. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mrs. Slaven, I know that you had asked to address the board.
Yes, thank you. Sandy Slaven. Excuse me. I'm sharing Alan's equipment tonight, and I'll be gone in a minute. Two things. I want to promote the Wareham Garden Club Fair. Our Christmas Fair was on Saturday, December 4th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the St. Patrick Church Hall. Please come and support us as we support town. Walk down or drive down Main Street and look at all the great planters that have been done by the garden club members. We have wreaths and designs and boxwood trees and bundle greens, and we even have a bake table of prepackaged cookies and small tea cakes. And my second item, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say Go Revolution for those that are watching soccer or anything like that. They're starting their playoff run tonight. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much for your comments. We do have a 7:15 dog hearing, so I'm going to postpone the board's comments till later on in the evening. And Mr. Titlebaum has agreed to run the hearing. I will ask for a motion.
Move that we open the hearing.
The dog hearing. Motion made by Mr. Tropiano, may I have a second, please?
Okay.
By Mr. Manese. I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now open. I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Titlebaum.
Okay, I'm gonna, let's see. We need to bring in Gary Buckminster. He's gonna be representing the Department of Natural Resources. We need to bring, do we have the dog owner present? We have, let's see.
We have Mr. Trox is available.
Right, he's a witness and the person who was bitten. So we need to let Mr. Brunier in, but I don't see an Adam, and I don't see anybody that looks like they are this person. So we should wait and ask the Animal Control Office, sort of slash DNR head, whether they confirm that he was going to be here tonight.
Hi, good evening. No, I have not heard from him at all regarding the incident, so I'll be filling in for Cheryl tonight. Obviously Cheryl's retired.
Yes, and we should have a shout out to Cheryl. Thanks. Thanks for your time here. There was no more zealous and passionate defender, saver, and lover of animals than you in the town during the past 10 or 15 years. So I hope she enjoys her retirement. How do we wish to proceed here? We don't have the
Want her in the meeting?
Pardon?
Do you want Ms. Golden, who also is a DNR?
Yeah, yeah, bring in anybody from the agency and
Officer Golden, then.
You know, we could proceed with this, given the facts as alleged. And I'm sure Mr. Trox is here to confirm that the handwritten notes his wife is submitting, which will have to be read into the record. It's pretty much constitute what the facts are. There isn't anything in the reporting indicating that the dog owner disputed at the time that his dog was responsible for the attack or anything else. We've handled attacks on humans before. We've been pretty consistent in our rulings, and I think we can do this. It does, however, create a grounds for appeal. So what do you want to do, Madam Chairman?
I think that we should proceed. He was advised of the meeting. And therefore, I believe that we should proceed with the hearing.
Okay. It's just that if he does appeal, they'll probably throw it back for a de novo hearing. He'll claim, oh, I didn't get it, or, you know, somebody in the house threw out the certified mail or whatever, you know. Or maybe something came up. Who knows? I shouldn't speculate as to why he isn't here. Okay, I'm gonna have the Director of Natural Resources read the complaint letter dated November 9th, 2021, sent to us into the record, please.
Do you need to swear them in, Mr. Titlebaum?
Uh, yeah, actually I do. I was kind of waiting until we had everybody, but I guess we don't. Oh, wait a minute. We've got a, we've got a Dave with his hand up. So who's Dave?
We just let him in.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm his neighbor at 9 Noshon Road, and he told me, he gave me the letter last night. He told me he was gonna be here, so maybe he's having trouble getting in. That's the person that was bitten.
No, we have the person, we have the victim. We're looking for the dog owner.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know you had the victim.
Yeah, we thought maybe you were the dog owner, but
No, I'm actually his neighbor. I live across the street from where this happened.
Okay, understood. Well, since we have you here, I do need to swear and anybody who intends to testify, and that would be Gary, that would be Mr. Trox, his wife possibly, and you, Dave, so raise your right hands, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, David Stahl.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
To tell the truth.
To tell the truth.
All truth.
All truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth.
Go help me, God.
Help me, God.
Okay, thank you. Now I will ask the Animal Control Officer to read the complaint letter into the record.
I thought she was gonna speak first.
I think we need to mute on somebody. Good evening, Gary Buckminster, Department of Natural Resources. My report from Cheryl is on October 15th, 2021. Animal Control Officer Cheryl Gervet-Dill responded to 18 Noshon Road for reported dog
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Gary. Let me, let me interrupt you. It's actually the complaint letter, because we have to get back, because that's kind of like what we would use.
Is this what you're reading in the record?
Yeah, the one dated November 9th that was addressed to us.
You got, you'll have to read it because I don't have, I have all
Okay, yeah, I'll read real quick. Conwell from Massachusetts, Complain of Vicious Barking Dogs, Section 157, Chapter 140, General Laws, November 9th, 2020. I hereby make complaint hereon that the dog owned or harbored by Adam Bruno, 18 Noshon Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, accident against West Wareham, but whatever, is dangerous by reason of aggression. One, the dog described as a 10-year-old male American Bulldog named Flash had broken through the backyard fence and attacked the neighbor, Ernest Trox, inflicting serious injury. On October 15th, 2021, I was dispatched to 18 Noshon Road for a reported dog attack. The victim, Ernest Trox, was in his own yard at 20 Noshon Road when the dog owned by Adam Bruno pushed through his backyard fence and attacked the neighbor unprovoked. The dog knocked the victim to the ground and then latched on to his left arm. It was not until the dog's owner pulled the dog off of the victim that the attack ended. The injured arm has needed multiple surgeries and skin grafts to repair the damage. This complaint is made under the penalties of perjury. Cheryl Gervet-Dill, Wareham Animal Control Officer. So yeah, if you would go ahead and read her narrative report. Now that we've got that in the record.
Thank you. It's, it mimics exactly what you read. Basically, October, October 15th, 2021, Officer Gervet-Dill responded to 18 Noshon Road reported dog tack. She was met by a man who was identified, who identified himself as the owner of the dog, described as a 10-year-old male bulldog, American Bulldog named Flash, who attacked his neighbor, in quotes, Ernie. Adam appeared very distraught from the, from the situation. He stated his dog pushed through the fence in an attempt to go after his neighbor's small dog, and then and when the owner reached down to protect the small dog, his owner, his dog latched on to the gentleman's arm, resulting in serious injuries. The victim, Ernest Trox, was transported to Toby Hospital prior to Cheryl Gervet-Dill's arrival. And the owner of the dog was served attending quarantine in hand. The dog owner also agreed to muzzle the dog and keep the same on leash at all times.
Okay. We also have, and I don't know if the board has it, has seen it. I don't know if it was included with the packet or not, because I didn't check the full packet, but I have it as part of the documents that were forwarded from the Department of Natural Resources. A South Coast Africa visit summary that references the dog bite. The discharge diagnosis was tendon repair, which you know, relates to the surgeries that have been mentioned and so on and so forth. We'll give the Trox's an opportunity to talk about that in a minute. But did the rest of the board see this stuff from South Coast?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well. Okay, so you've got it, so that'll go into, that'll go into the record of hearing. The day of the dog attack, I have a narrative report here from Mrs. Trox, but I think she should be the one to, to read that and testify to that. We also have a picture of, this was furnished by Officer Gervet-Dill of Mr. Trox's wrist, which is not the most pretty thing in the world, we shall say. We also have her narrative report that the Director of Natural Resources just read into the record. There is also a report that I'll read into the record provided by the Wareham Police Department, narrative of Patrol Officer Jennifer Brayley. On October 15th, 2021, at 7:54 hours, I was dispatched to 20 Noshon Road for the report of a dog bite. Dispatch advised the victim was bleeding profusely and that the dog had been secured. Upon arrival, I spoke with the victim, Ernest Trox, and it appeared that the bleeding to his left arm was under control. Trox's arm was wrapped in several towels and elevated. Trox stated that he was walking his dog when the neighbor's dog came running at him from behind its fence. Trox stated that the dog knocked him down and then grabbed his left arm with its mouth, tearing the skin through the muscle down to the bone. Trox stated his neighbor, Adam Bruno, immediately ran to him and the dog from the backyard. Trox stated that Bruno immediately brought the dog in the house and returned with towels to help stop the bleeding. I then spoke with Bruno, who remained with Trox. Bruno stated that his nine-year-old American Bulldog was in the backyard, started barking, and ran out of the backyard towards the street. Bruno stated that the dog knocked Trox down to the ground and then grabbed his arm. Bruno stated that he had grabbed the dog and secured him in the house in his crate. Bruno stated that he doesn't understand why the dog went after Trox. He stated that his dog has been to obedience training and has never behaved this way before. Bruno stated that the dog is up to date with his vaccinations, and his vet is Dr. Fall at Animal Health Clinic. Due to the severity of Trox's injuries, he was transported to St. Luke's Hospital by Wareham EMS. Wareham DNR was notified, and Bruno was advised to quarantine the dog until given further instructions by Wareham DNR. Okay, so I just wanted to get that into the record because it provides a little more detail about the aftermath of what took place. Well, we're still on the facts of the matter, so I would ask to hear from Mr. Trox and Mrs. Trox, as they were the only people here that actually saw the attack.
Just, I'm Cynthia Hines. I'm their attorney. I'm present here with them, too.
Okay, yeah, well, let the minutes reflect that as well. Cynthia Hines?
Yes, H-I-N-E-S. And Mrs. Trox would like to read in her statement, if that's okay.
That's fine. Good evening.
Good evening. Basically, I wrote that we were taking on a normal walk that we would take every single day. And I said, we usually walk the dog daily at 8:30 a.m. right at the end of the driveway to repack it, then turn left when we get to On Catina Road, and then turn left onto Nashwena, then turn right onto Nashon Road, Nashon Road again. And as we pass number 18, the Bruno's house. And we live at number 20, which is right next door, so our driveways basically almost touch. And it was, everything was as normal as could be that day until we got to the point of the end of the Bruno's driveway. And at that point, that's when we saw that dog. And my husband had never even seen that dog before. And that dog was acting like he was gonna attack my dog, so I immediately removed the dog and got him into the house. Come back out to stand by my husband, and then at that point in time, the dog fly off, which I had only seen one other time, and he was acting aggressive at that time about my dog. But I immediately was sitting beside my husband, and the dog came charging. I mean, it wasn't just casually walking out. It was charging right at my husband, and he'd never even seen my husband ever before. We've never had an interaction. So we weren't doing anything that would be provoking an attack like that. And he just came running straight at him, knocked him right to the ground, and he bounced and hit the the street very hard, and he ended up with a subdural hematoma, a brain bleed. And as a result of that attack, along with tearing of the arm and the tendons all hanging out, things that should be inside the body or totally hanging outside the body. And that day when he was transported to St. Luke's, they operated on him, his tendons that night to try and save what they could of the tendons that were there, because they were pretty badly damaged. And so it was a very unsettling day altogether for all of us. And he had to go buy two ambulances. He went for an ambulance from our house to to Toby, and then they said that they basically didn't have the ability to do anything to help him out there. So they had to ship him off. So they had to ship him off to St. Luke's. And went by, by ambulance again. And he had lots of blood loss, there was lots of blood in the street of that day. And Adam, like I said, was helping us, he was standing there right beside me, and he was helping to get as much blood away from my husband's arm as he, as he could. So he was very helpful at the time, but that doesn't help the situation overall. So it's like, he was very, very extremely upset about the whole thing, genuinely. So I can't fault him for helping me do that, but it's like, the dog, you know, an unprovoked attack on my husband. And it's like, we fear for our lives, basically, when we step out of the house, we're afraid we're going to see that dog come charging at us. Recently, when we had that storm knocked out of a tree, branched down onto our fence, left a gaping hole between our yard and their yard, and we were afraid just to go out in our backyard. So it's like, and he's already had to have his, um, skin graft this week. And he's had to have the tendons, he's had to have so many things, pins in his arm to hold his wrist together from where the dog broke his arm. His ulna. And, uh, in general, this has been kind of a, I did deviate a little bit from my reading here, sorry. So, if I should go back, should I go back to reading what I have, or?
I think you're doing well.
You think I'm doing well?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Trucks is?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd, oh, you're, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, uh, basically, most of what you heard from my wife, I have no memory of, because I guess when I was slammed to the pavement, had the blame, brain bleed that kind of erased whatever memory of this horrible thing was happening. My first memory of it, I was sitting on the tailgate of my truck, and they were putting towels over my, uh, over my wound, and like she said, I was taking a Toby, Toby wasn't able to take care of this, so I, uh, wound up going to St. Luke's and got the surgery to get most of my arm fixed. There were three pins in my arm, in my wrist, you know, here, here it is. Uh, I still don't have much use of it, I'm not going to get all the use of it back. Uh, and I pretty much experienced pain pretty much every day, you know, not a great deal, but some. Uh, and like she said, I did have to go through, uh, uh, skin graft, uh, kind of not too pleasant, painful, you know what I mean? Uh, and I don't really know how long this is going to go on before I get back to some sort of normal.
Why, why don't you tell how many surgeries you've had so far?
Uh, so far, I've had two. The first one was the day it happened, where they fixed the tendons and whatnot. And the second one-
Put the pins in.
And put the pins in, and the second one was a week from yesterday, when they did the skin graft. Uh, and I don't know if I've got more surgery ahead or not, but, uh, I do have, uh, rehabilitation sessions I have to go to. And, uh, like my wife said, it kind of changed the culture of the neighborhood, you know, we used to feel we could walk all around the neighborhood and not worry about anything, and now, you know, even some of our neighbors that know about this worry about walking their children in front of the house and, uh, and like that. I mean, Dave, who's chimed in, his grandson plays in the front yard right, right across, right across the street. And, uh, you know, I mean, this whole thing happened because somebody didn't close the gate. And, you know, it's a, it's a good gate, but if somebody doesn't close it, it's a possibility, it could happen again. That's about all I've got to say, I believe.
So, can I chime in for a second? I'm Dave. Uh, actually, Ryan's, now my son, we adopted him, but, uh, uh, so Ryan is eleven years old, and I'm very concerned, because if this was Ryan and this dog got Ryan, uh, we would, we'd be talking a different story, because he would, the dog would have killed Ryan. Dog would have ripped Brian apart, so I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned that the dog doesn't live in the house, the dog lives in the trailer. It's in the yard in the house, so it's not even part of the house. Uh, I, I like the neighbors, I think they, they're great people, but the trailer's been there for over a year, and the dog's been living in that trailer. Uh, my wife's never seen the dog, but I've seen the dog a couple of times, and I know the dog's been in the trailer, not the house. Uh, I've also seen the dog off, off of leash with the owner. Uh, now, some dogs stay with their owner, but, uh, but there is a leash law, and I, I, I kind of don't believe the dog ran out of the yard, I think the dog's been off the leash before. I've seen the dog off the leash, uh. So, my concern is that the children in the neighborhood, not just mine, but other children. Uh, and would we have a different discussion today if this dog got a child?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll go around the board and see if they have any questions, uh, for any of the witnesses here. Alan?
Said no.
Alan, do you have, do you have questions for the witnesses?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, uh, Patrick?
No, I don't have any questions, I have some things to say, but I don't have any question.
Uh, Jim?
Um, did the dog break through the fence, or was the gate open?
Close it.
It was-
We missed the first couple of words of what you said, ma'am.
They want you to say it again. Okay, the, the gate was not closed, the gate was, they didn't close the gate, so the dog had nothing, he just could walk out.
Thank you.
He forgot, the owner forgot to lock the gate. He told us that, Adam told us that.
Good. Uh, Judy?
No, the only question I have, sir, is, um, what Mr., what Dave's last name is, so that we can have it for the record?
Oh, yes.
If you're on mute, sir.
Oh, my name is Dave, and the last name is S.T.A.H.L., and I live at number nine. Right across the street, yeah.
Okay. It's number nine, we can look it up on the property records, anyway.
That's what I have.
Okay, well, usually, usually, during these hearings, we have somebody, uh, the dog owner here to, you know, not necessarily defend the actions of their dog, in a case like this, I don't think they could. Uh, but at least, you know, advocate for a certain result, we don't have that. Uh, so I guess at this point, I would ask the Harbor Master, uh, slash Director of Natural Resources, uh, for his recommendation on what to do here. Uh, and then we can, uh, I guess we can close the hearing for now, and, or we could issue, uh, you know, orders and continue the hearing until the dog owner has a chance to to talk about his dog and what, what measures he might intend to take. I, I guess before that, I would ask, uh, the Director of Natural Resources, has there been any after conversation, uh, between the department and the dog owner?
Just what Cheryl had, um, that he was going to make sure that the dog was secured, uh, and had a muzzle. Um, you know, and, and obviously, I came here prepared to, um, make my recommendation on the, the outcome of this dog, so um, I, I can give that to you guys if you'd like right now also, and just note it into record and go with it from there.
Yeah.
Due to the circumstances that took place, um, you know, we're dealing with a very powerful dog, it's a dog, it's a working dog, it's a dog that, um, you know, this isn't, this isn't a bite by a, a, a small breed, this is a, this did some serious damage, and and the gentleman, Dave, like you said, this is, this would have been a different story if we were a smaller person. I am, uh, going to request euthanasia of this dog, um, or, for the outcome of it. Uh, and you can choose on what you'd like to do, if you'd like to hold it, we can uh, wait till the owner's here, um, I'm going to stand our ground on this, on this, uh, uh, request. Um, but, you know, for, for the purposes of, of a fair, uh, hearing with them, we, we can certainly put on the, the ruling of the dog has to be on leash, has to be fenced in yard, has to be under the control of a person eighteen years of age or older, um, all of the, the standard ones that we normally put in place to, to try to prevent other issues. Um, and go from there, but, uh, that's, that's where we stand with our recommendation.
Can I, can I say one thing? That you might not be aware of, there, there are two young children that are in that house as well, that are near this dog. Very young children, twins, uh, so for them to even still have the dog, it's concerning.
Okay. Uh.
Want to close the hearing?
Yeah, the only problem with closing the hearing is that we're going to have to notice another one if we, uh, do bring the dog owner back in subsequently.
Can we, um, recess it and still make the recommendation?
Well, you can recess it, we can make a recommendation, uh, what we could do is we could take what, uh, the, what are the typical, uh, requirements that we issue the six, the six that we always do when there's a dangerous dog finding. Uh, I think we could certainly make a finding of dangerousness tonight, and I think we could issue temporary orders while we, uh, you know, recess the hearing to keep it open, uh, so that the dog owner can come in and, and defend his dog. Uh, now that he knows that the recommendation is euthanasia, I would anticipate that if he intends to try to defend the dog, he would show up for that. Or possibly, he might just decide to put the dog down on his own, we have had that happen before. So, is, is that how you'd like to proceed, Madam Chairman?
Uh.
Uh, Mr. Truck, yeah?
Yeah, I, I, I think timeline-wise, I, I, look, this is, um, pretty serious to me, uh, what happened with this dog. And this could happen anytime to anybody, tomorrow, the next day, whatever, could happen. And I'm not so sure that I want to leave this dog out there, um, with, um, no, you know, I mean, no matter what we tell them, doesn't mean that they can restrain this animal. It sounds to me like this, this animal is, is problematic all the way around. And, um, I, I totally, I was thinking euthanasia before he even said it. Talking.
Yeah, it's background noise.
Um, you know, I was thinking that almost right off the bat, uh, after I listened to, to, to the damage that was done and the type of dog, not necessarily the breed, but the type of attack. Uh, the dog, the owner said in his response that the dog went to go after their dog, and because the owner wasn't, uh, was the only one left to put his hand down, and that's why he went after him. Uh, that's, that doesn't wash with me at all, not for a second. Um, you know, that's like saying, well, he would have only eaten your dog instead of eating you, if you, you know, your dog was still there. That seems ridiculous to me, uh, and I, I don't know how you come in and defend this at all. And I think we need to act quicker than, than, than slowly. And that's just my opinion.
Okay.
I, I asked the question again, um, Mr. Truck, if, can we recess it but make a recommendation at the same time?
Well, we can recess it, uh, it wouldn't be, I, I would, I, I mean, what would the recommendation be? I mean, you know, if, if you're going to recess it to give the owner an opportunity to, to sort of plead for his dog, then, you know, there isn't a recommendation to be made, there's temporary orders to be issued, which would be the six conditions that we always stick uh, people with, and we might want to vote the dangerous finding in order to do that. You see, you see what I mean? So procedurally, I mean, if, if the board's pleasure is to go ahead and just decide it all tonight, then that's fine. Uh, but if it wants to give the, the animal owner an opportunity to come in, then, you know, we have to do it a little differently, that's all. But that's your call.
It's fine. Most hearings make our recommendations, he can appeal that.
Yes.
Well, we, we, we would issue an order, it's not a recommendation, Judy, it's an order.
No, I, yeah, we would issue, we would close the hearing, we would issue an order, and he has the opportunity, the owner has the opportunity to appeal the order, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, he has an opportunity to appeal the order once it's served, uh, I think it's a, I don't know if it's a ten-day or a twenty-day appeal, I think it's a ten, because it's district court. Um, but he has time to appeal, uh, to the Wareham District Court, and he gets a, he gets a fresh hearing, so.
My, I, uh, if you were to ask me what I would do, I would close the hearing and make the recommendations.
I move and close the hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion to close the hearing, second, uh, roll call vote, Jim? Oh, Jim's got his hand up, so let's, uh, before we do the, the vote, let's see what Jim has to say, I didn't see it.
Yeah, um, so has there been any follow-up by, um, the Department of Natural Resources at all? Visiting the home or the conditions of which the dog is kept? Um, fencing, security, um, since, since the incident? Um, we'll start with that.
I believe Cheryl was in contact with the owner of the dog regarding those circumstances, and, um, we did, um, we did deliver the paperwork to him as well. Um, we've also had no issues with this dog in the past. Um, he obviously, clearly, doesn't officially reside in town, he's living in a trailer. Um, so I believe he's more of a transient currently at this point.
The dog owner?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay, that's, I, I didn't know that he was living in the trailer on the property, is that like a, um, a toe-behind trailer?
Uh, I'm assuming.
Correct, it is.
Okay.
It's been dropped there for about a year, and he's been living there for over a year.
Yeah, I, I don't know if, I mean, that's an issue in itself, separate and aside, but, um, yeah, so, um, just, just so, um, it's on record, I guess. Oftentimes, when, you know, usually, it's a, um, a second or, a second offense that, um, would, would move to euthanate, euthanize a dog. I'm also a proponent to try to see if we can find a no-kill shelter at the owner's expense in order to see if they can take the dog and find a home, borrow it, and retrain it, um, in another place, um, which would maybe be more appropriate. Um, and, um, I'm very sorry what happened, and, uh, to Mr. Trucks, and, um, it is pretty severe, like, uh, previous speaker said, that large dogs, and, um, again, I, I'm, I would like to see if something could be done beyond euthanasia, uh, euthanizing the dog and, uh, no-kill shelter, uh, and, and put the decision on the, um, at the owner's, um, responsibility on how they want to proceed, one way or the other on that, thank you.
Okay, uh, the property appears to be owned by somebody of the same last name, so, uh, I, I don't, I don't know what the living arrangements are, whether this is somebody letting their brother or their nephew or whatever live there, or their son. Um, but the, the eighteen Noshon Road property is owned by somebody with the same last name, I just wanted to get that out there, so that the board wasn't thinking that this was just some person who'd been taken in by a friend or something like that, apparently, it's a relative, so the relationship is probably a little more deep. Uh, okay, we have the motion and the second, uh, to close the hearing, uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, okay, the hearing is closed. Uh, okay, uh, we will have the Animal Control Office, uh, Sir/Department of Natural Resources Director, uh, repeat his recommendation.
Uh, the sum, we're, we're recommending euthanasia of the animal.
Okay.
I move.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, a second, uh, for discussion. This, this is a difficult, this is a difficult one, uh, because in the past, uh, we have uh, given dogs that have bitten humans, attacked humans, uh, a second chance, I know we did that with a case out in West Wareham, uh, where the person walking the dog actually ran off after the dog attack, we, we gave those dogs another shot. Of course, the upshot of that was, uh, the dogs got out and did bite another dog, and that was, the owner decided to not even contest the, uh, the charges against them and euthanize the dogs on their own. Um, so my, my concern is some consistency here. I, I understand that, you know, an, an American Bulldog is not an English Bulldog. It's not low-fat with four on the floor, this is a big, rangy, uh, type of breed, you know, eighty to a hundred pounds. Uh, you know, similar in strength and speed and power to a German Shepherd or a large, uh, you know, pit bull-type dog. So it absolutely is, is a threat, uh, and, and possibly more than a threat than, than, certainly more than a threat- And, and possibly more than a threat than, than, certainly more than a threat than a, than a nipper is going to be. So I'm kind of torn on what to do here. I understand what Jim is saying, but I also understand that, you know, this was a very severe attack. And Mr. Trucks almost got killed when you consider that he, you know, clunked his head on the ground pretty hard. And, you know, if he'd hit the, hit it a certain angle or hit it a little harder, who knows if he'd be here to tell us what happened. But, Alan?
I almost wish we could temporarily ship the dog over to Lakeville and keep it over there and see if there's a way to place it elsewhere if someone wanted to take a chance, but at the same time, this is obviously gonna be a major civil action as far as the victim and the owner of the dog, which is gonna be interesting to see how it ends up. It's really hard to come up with an easy answer, none of us really want to put a dog down unless we have to, but this type of situation, unfortunately, the dog has done this once. Sometimes animals, when they do something like this, have a nature to do it again because, you know, it just, I'm not gonna call it a bloodlust or something, but there's a chance that, the owner is, and the information we have says he'll keep the dog muzzling on a leash. I don't know if that's sufficient, the dog might be able to break away from a leash. If there's a muzzle on the dog at all times, fine, but dog's gotta eat sooner or later so you know the muzzle's coming off. So I don't have an easy answer for this. If there's a way to move the dog over to Lakeville at the owner's expense until this was resolved, I'd be okay with that, but whatever you guys decide, you know, it's, I just don't like to sit there and euthanize a dog without everybody getting a chance to have input.
Okay, well, you, you could pose that as a question to the Director of Natural Resources, is
So done.
Is there a possibility to, to take the dog and, and basically put it over there and out of the neighborhood until the decision is arrived at?
Sorry, I was actually raising my hand regarding that issue. That, they will screen the dog, but due to the circumstances, they will not place that dog, I guarantee it.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I yield for the animal just as well, but I, I do agree the circumstances are very different than the last fight that took place in West Wareham.
Yeah.
No, certainly the severity of the injury was.
Yeah, he could have grabbed it, broken, really finished it off.
Yeah. Judy?
I second euthanasia, and I stand by my second.
Okay. Yeah, this, this is, this is a tough one. But I think in this instance, I'm gonna have to go along with the recommendation simply because the, the nature of the, the threat from an animal like this is, is pretty extreme. So I guess I'll call for the vote at this point, is, is anything else, is there anything else? Yeah, okay.
Again, I believe when I was reading through the Lakeville Animal Shelter, who are going to contract that we're gonna discuss later tonight, I believe. There is a provision for, for housing animals over there, and again, I would like to put the onus on the responsibility in the, of the owner to make the decision on euthanasia or trying to find no-kill rehabilit-, rehabilitation shelter or program under their, their expense. And then, then these programs, you know, try to retrain a dog, and if they find they cannot do that, they would euthanize. But oftentimes, they can retrain them and they find an appropriate home in this area that would not be populated such as this or what they felt, you know, appropriate. So that's all I want to say, this is like the third time that I've suggested this for dogs. And we don't have that in our bylaws as far as another choice, but I believe it is a choice we could make, and and I, I understand the severity of it and the aggressiveness of the dog. That's all, thank you.
Yeah, and one thing, one thing we should, we, you know, as noted, he has, the owner has a right of appeal if he's aggrieved by our decision, whatever it is. And he can go into court, he gets a, he gets a whole, whole fresh, you know, sort of a mini trial, if you will, with the clerk magistrate on these things. And, you know, he can plead his case in there, I guess, if he's, if he's concerned about the dog. What does concern me is that I don't see, don't see anybody here tonight for the dog either. People may have been helpful at the time, but, you know, part of the responsibility of dealing with the aftermath of one of these attacks is showing up for one of these hearings. Or alternatively, taking care of the problem yourself, and, and, you know, people have euthanized dogs on their own to avoid the hearings if they wish. Anyway, we've got a motion and a second, roll call vote, Alan?
I'm gonna vote yes mainly because the owner or any of the family members have not had the courtesy to show up or at least call in and say we have a problem, we can't make it.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
Patrick?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I wanted to point out that Mr., I forget his last name, Mr. Trucks, his wrist, you know, the radial artery is right there, that artery that could have been severed, and that we might not be talking to him right now. Serious damage in it was pretty close. So, you know, this is, this is, and I don't want to kill any dogs. You know, most of the time I want to kill the owners, frankly, just between you and I, because it's usually them that are the problem, not the poor dog. And it's just a sad thing, none of these, none of these hearings ever work out well at all. Not for the dogs, not for the people, not for anybody, and it's a sad thing. But in this case, I don't think we have any choice. And I vote yes.
Okay, Judy had said she'd voted yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll vote yes. You know, a, a bit reluctantly because I think it deviates from what we have done before, but I don't think we've quite faced a dog with, with this ability to harm people, to put it bluntly. This dog does, it might be nine years old, but, you know, I've got a twelve-and-a-half-year-old German shepherd lounging behind me tonight that still moves pretty good, and you know, fortunately, she doesn't get herself into these circumstances, but the dog could remain alive and strong for a long time, I guess is my point. And the owner does have the, the right of appeal. I feel very badly for the victims in this case, which is Mr. Trucks and his wife, because she's gotta take care of him while this is all going on and had to, you know, experience the event at the time. I do want to note that had we not, and I'm voting yes, had we not voted yes and had, had we found the dog dangerous, it wouldn't have had any particular bearing on the civil litigation. There isn't really a distinction between that. You know, we found that euthanasia is, is necessary with this dog because it clearly is dangerous, and the conditions just may not protect the public adequately, so. With that in mind, thank you, everybody, thank you to the Director of Natural Resources. Thank you to Cheryl for assembling the record, thank you to the board for hearing it out, and thank you to the victims and their attorney for coming in and testifying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
On, I have a couple of things to say, we are not going to be having an executive session this evening. And unfortunately, under item 10A, Mr. Gamble was, had to run his own meeting at seven fifteen. I had hoped to give him an opportunity to talk about community youth empowerment, and we'll try and schedule that at another time. So the next thing on the agenda would be the Cable Advisory Committee on Appointments.
I move that we appoint Dan Butler and Matthew Underhill to the Cable Advisory Committee to a term to expire on completion of the contract signing.
Second.
Okay, Dan's actually here, if you wanted to bring him in and interview him.
You want him in?
It's-
Are they bringing him in?
Yeah, he's, if he chooses to come in, yes, that's fine.
Fine, okay.
Dan? How are you?
Yes, I'm, uh, fine, fine, ma'am. And I believe I'm on.
Yes, you are, and it's what we call volunteered, you were volunteered to.
Yes, ma'am. And pleased, pleased to volunteer.
Indicated some interest in the, the appropriateness and the, the quality of cable services and communication within the town, so I think you're probably a perfect volunteer.
Thank you, ma'am, yeah, that's a good summary of my, my intentions, my motivation.
All right, is there anything else you want to tell us before we, we vote?
Uh, no, just, just that I really do believe that cable and fiber optic broadband infrastructure is critical to the vitality of Wareham, our, our economy, the education system in the town, our citizens. Pretty much everybody has come to rely on good, reliable, and hopefully cost-effective cable service. And we have two contracts coming due soon, the Verizon contract coming due in March of 2023, and the Comcast contract coming due in 2025, so I think it's, it's important that we start looking hard at whether we're getting the service that we should have for our citizens and businesses in the town, and if there are alternatives, and what we can do to, to make sure that we have good, reliable, high-quality, up-to-date, innovative, and cost-effective service available to the people of Wareham.
Very nice.
Thank you. Um, did we make a motion already? You made a motion, Mr. Tropiano.
I made a motion, you didn't get a second yet.
Motion?
You got one from Peter.
By Mr. Tropiano, and then by Mr. Tidalbaum, I will go for a roll call vote.
Can we have a discussion here? Yes?
Oh, you, you have a question, I'm sorry.
Discussion, we've got a motion and a second, correct?
Yes, I got my second, so yes, discussion.
Is, is Mr. Underhill appointed because of the position he holds as the Director of Information Technology?
Yes.
So that's, that's a dedicated spot on.
Reconfirming the appointment, he's, he's still technically appointed because he's been on the committee, the committee was never disbanded.
Right, this is a selectmen's committee?
It's actually a federally required committee uh, under the Federal Communications Act, specifically for each municipality to have a cable advisory committee to advise the executive branch on what it should try to get in a contract with the cable providers. And we, it also serves as a conduit for money to go to the public access stations as well.
Um, okay, I just, I want to just clarify that he's appointed by the selectman as part of his position within the town, because he's not a resident of the town.
That's correct.
That's correct.
To serve on committees, you're, you're supposed to be a resident, and we still need a third member, then?
We still need a third member, but at least we have a quorum and they can conduct business.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Dan.
Jim, he would, he would be an ex-official voting member.
I was just inquiring.
Roll call vote, Mr. Tidalbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The paperwork is in the selectmen's office, Mr. Butler, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'll pick that up and I'll take care, I'll sign that.
Thank you, I would, I would say congratulations, but I did it for too long myself.
Have a good night.
Juan Gamble will not be able to be with us this evening, but I think it's important that we do hear from him about the exciting and interesting program that he is using and helping high school students stay the course and, and have some opportunities to move forward in their education. The next item would be, be accepting a donation from Stop &amp; Shop, the Community Bag Program, in the amount of sixty-nine dollars. Mr. Tropiano may have a motion.
Yes, I move that we accept the donation of Stop &amp; Shop Community Bag Program, in the amount of sixty-nine dollars to the Wareham Free Library Gift Fund.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Tropiano with a second by Mr. Tidalbaum, is there any further discussion? Nope, I will call for a roll call vote, Mr. Tidalbaum.
Yes, and thank you.
Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and thank you very much, Stop &amp; Shop. And then, finally, well, it's not, yeah, it is finally, no, it isn't, because we haven't done board's comments. The discussion, the possible vote to renew the animal shelter agreement with the town of Lakeville. I did have town council review the agreement. It's exactly the same agreement as we have in place right now, except for the change, the price.
Everything goes up.
Yep. I move we approve the, the renewal of the animal shelter agreement with the town of Lakeville.
Second, I, I, I've spoken with the Department of Natural Resources Director and the ACO about that shelter several times, and they, they, they like working with them, they say they're good people, like-minded officials, and it's a good relationship.
It's the only one easy for us to use.
Is that a second, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay, motion made in sec, the second motion made by Mr. Tropiano, seconded by Mr. Tidalbaum, any further discussion? Or a roll call vote, Mr. Tidalbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yes.
Mr. Manese?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero, it is unanimous. We will go back to the board's comments, because we get over that, Mr. Manese, do you want to go first, sir?
Um.
This is board.
I'm good for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tidalbaum?
All right, I've run my mouth enough already.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven.
Uh, just a reminder, I believe Thursday at seven PM, I think it's at the middle school probably with the auditorium. We have a, a meeting with the school committee, the board of selectmen on their budget. That will always be interesting. And again, just to reaffirm what Peter said about the Christmas parade, my Thunder Brother, I try to get ready for the parade, may or may not be ready, so this is Whiteside, and I'm much more kind of vehicle will be in, that's all I have there.
Okay.
And Mr. Tropiano?
Yeah, no, I have nothing, it's kind of a sad night here, so.
And I comments as well, no town administrators' reports, games on, and initiative reports, Mr. Manese?
Um, I guess we went over it, announcements about the Caber Marion Wareham, uh, Caber Wareham, region refuse district meeting tomorrow, and looks like a busy week for meetings for us with, with school committee budget and GATRA, if, if, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tidalbaum?
Uh, no, my, my friend here wants me to get off the couch, so keep it brief.
Mr. Slaven?
Um, I've got on Friday, a state legislative meeting on transportation, public works, and utilities, hopefully we'll get a little more information on chapter ninety, possible increase in funding, whether we have to testify or not, I'm not sure yet. And I'd like the office, if they could, to put a request out to those people who signed up for the Bike Path Committee to try and get them together to start that Bike Path Committee moving forward, that's it.
Thank you. Tropiano?
Uh, I'm just, I want to hope that we can, now that they've, they've kind of informally turned over the school to us, I'd like to make that a formal, formal turnover by us accepting it at some point. And we're gonna turn it over to the school, and like that to happen as, as soon as possible, because they're hoping, I believe, to get students in there in January. So we're gonna have to kind of step on that gas pedal a little bit, and I'd like to see that happen. I just, I can't, I gotta say, and every time I get a chance to say this, the job that they did was phenomenal, when everybody gets to finally get in there and get a look at that place and see what happened over there, I, I cannot believe anybody will have anything bad to say. Although, who knows what Facebook will do. and see what happened over there, I, I cannot believe anybody will have anything bad to say, although, who knows what Facebook will do.
Thank you, Mr. Copiano, I have reached out to Mr. Swett, who's chairman of the school building committee, as well as, um, Ms. Bakayaki, to make sure that we do get, that we accept the building, and then we turn it over to the school. Um, and the other thing, gentlemen, is that we have one hundred and twenty-four licenses, that the office is processing between now and December thirty-first. And so they will be, so, um, hopefully none of you have arthritis, or maybe you will at the end of the time of settling and signing all of those, um, licenses.
Better make yourself a stamp.
Now. Um, is there any other business to come before this meeting?
Um, nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned by Mr. Slaven, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Titlebomb, roll call vote, Mr. Titlebomb?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
It's Copiano?
Yes.
Mr. Menees?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much, and good night, Wareham, thank you, gentlemen, and have a nice, we'll see you several times this week.